Uh huh. You know, if I had a hundred sheep and one of them got away, I would leave the ninety-nine and go find that one. That's right.
All right, this portion is set to be heard. We ask that you come forward, state your name and address so that we may have that for record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments of council as a whole and do not attempt to engage individual members of council. It is this council's policy to follow through with, with you on your concern. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson to represent the group in their comments. Again, just want to ensure that others have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and Council for seeing me tonight. We, I feel like the citizens need some... Oh, I'm sorry, Stacy Young. You need my home address? Forty-seven forty-seven Hunging Bird Lane in Valdosta, Georgia.
Thank you.
I think the citizens could use some help from the LDR as it sits right now. We're building a new building that is costing us thousands of dollars. It shouldn't have to be spent. The sign ordinance, I feel like, needs some work. We've got a citizen on Bemis Road that's trying to get enrollment up for a daycare center. And the city sent a letter out about the banner she put on her fence because I guess they were illegal. But yeah, BSU stretched a banner all the way across Oak Street that I don't know if the city is aware of, if they're taking action on that or not. Yeah, we did ten thousand dollars for the curbbing that we didn't need. We had a swell that would have diverted one or two pond at the retention pond where we're building right now. Let's see, we got eight thousand dollars in landscaping that most of will not be seen by anybody because it'll be down north and south property line where we building. It's twenty thousand dollars in stucco because the city doesn't like a metal sided building. I think it's a waste of money as well. The retention pond now, we've been told, has to be inspected, but I'm not aware of any other retention ponds that are going to have to be inspected. I may be wrong, but I asked some questions and nobody can tell me that their ponds have to be inspected, but apparently ours does. Also, six thousand dollars for a sidewalk that the city of Valdosta now owns that we had to put in. And when I brought up the fact that we have tea splosts, which I understand is transportation splosts, which I thought would pay for sidewalks, or it should pay for sidewalks. I was told that they didn't, we don't care if you put a sidewalk in or not, but you're not going to get the CO for the building until you do. That's a little, that sounds like extortion to me. You're forcing me to, and you already forced it, I've had to spend six thousand dollars to put a sidewalk in on the city's property that goes nowhere. It doesn't connect to anything. It's just money that's thrown away and it's because of the LDR. LDR may have a use, it may have a purpose, but somebody's got to pay for it. And that's the citizens that are trying to start businesses in this community and create jobs and generate taxes. And we need some relief from it, I feel like. Thank you for hearing.
What's that address of your current building?
I think it's twenty-eight thirteen Bemis Road. Twenty-six thirteen, I'm sorry, I was correcting.
If you'll say afterwards, you can speak with Ben and Al.
I've already spoken to Ben, that's what I'm here for now, because Ben can't give us, he can't give citizens relief from the LDR. We need some relief on the government level. This is stuff that is not, we shouldn't have to be spending this money when we don't have to. You guys want the city of Valdosta to look beautiful, I do too. But when you come in from the east into Valdosta, you pass a liquor store with thirty drunks out there at any one time on city property that not only does the city condone, but they encourage it. They put slabs in...
So you said it was twenty-eight sixteen, twenty-six sixteen?
Twenty-six thirteen.
Twenty-six thirteen.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard?
I do honor the councilman today and the man who is absent. My name is Mary Moy. I resigned at six-twenty Monroe Street here in Valdosta. I'm here again concerning the property at five seven fifteen East Magnolia Street in which my sister Christine Williams lived there. And I have seen houses built after my sister put in her application. There's a house that looks like it's completely on Lamar Street. There's a house that has been fixed up on Monroe Street and several other locations. And I was wondering what is happening to my sister Christine. Application had been put in before my father passed in nineteen, no, twenty, twenty thirteen. And it's almost eleven years. And I'm here to see what is going on. I talked to Ms. Riley and she said that every year you would have to apply for in January. So I also talked to Mr. Mayor and several others with complaint. He stated that those like in twenty-three, they will be taken care of in twenty-four. But there's a mix up there. Ms. Riley is saying one thing and he is saying another. And I'm here today. I'm here today to ask the committee, the council, to please consider talking with us and having a meeting concerning these houses.
If you'll stay afterwards, I'll have her to speak to you about this.
But you all can meet with us, the council, you all can meet with us. Okay, okay. Okay, I would like to also state that Mr. Jordan could be here, you know, to talk with us tonight. Mr. Richard Jordan. Okay, thank you so much.
Any other citizens to be heard?
My name is Lauren Camarena. I live at thirty-five twenty-one Knights Mill. I have two questions. My first one is the lawn debris. When we mow the yard, put down trees or anything else like that, it sits out on the lawn for a month or longer. I called and I was told that they're a couple of days behind. They finally got picked up today, but it was out there for a month and a half. So I would like to know the city's schedule because I live in HOA neighborhood and I don't want to get fined, you know, by my HOA president. That's my first question. My second question is, when the recycling bins, the blue ones, got taken away from the citizens of Valdosta, it looked like it was supposed to be temporary, but a couple of years later it is now permanent. Are we ever going to go back to where you guys pick it up from the actual residents? Because I hate taking my recycling to Five Points every single week to keep Valdosta cleaner. Lauren Camarena.
Camarena.
Yeah.
If you will stay afterwards, I'll have Larry Yonk and I'll be...
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I reside at one-twelve Pemberton Avenue. I just wanted to ask about that...
What's your name?
Obetra Simmons. I wanted to ask about that grant money. I just want to know, how do y'all go about doing that? Because how can you let somebody get a roof on their house that own nine houses? They own property, nine properties, and then y'all grant them to get a roof on top of their house? Some people that need a roof can't even get a roof. You know, and that's what I'm concerned about. Y'all put a roof on somebody's house that got nine properties. So they shouldn't even be entitled to get the grant money. So I'm trying to figure out, people that need the grant money, y'all skipped out by their names. And the people that own homes, got nine homes here in Valdosta, Georgia, they got a roof put on their house with that grant money.
Amen.
So when it came to all the people now, you keep calling, you keep calling, they say, well, we call you about this and that right there. Some ain't right about that with this paperwork.
Amen.
I'm appreciate what happened with, you know, it came down. I fought hard for my mama. I kept calling. I don't know the lady's name that helped me, but I know Ms. Vivian Coda fought hard for my mama to get her house. But I'm just saying, some ain't right with going on with that paperwork.
Ms. Simmons, if you will say afterwards, or have Ms. Riley, she can actually explain to you afterwards.
That's it, like that. Okay, I'll stay though. Yes, sir, I'll stay.
Have you told Ms. Riley?
Yes, I have. Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Silver Levens and I stay at six-twelve Monroe Street. And I have an elder aunt stay at nine-twenty West Street. I've been calling for two years to try to get my house repainted. Every time I called down there, Ms. Riley always tell me, we ain't got no phones to call by. That I don't understand. I see other people before I got on there or after I got on there, they got their house painted. And I don't understand that.
All right, once again, you can stay over as well. We'd like to address this, you know, right being here so that way you don't have to come back down and let it out. And we'll try to find you answers tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm John Robinson of thirty-two twenty-seven San Jolene Surfer in Lake Park, Georgia. I'm here to talk about the inequality, this economic inequality that led to many problems that the lady just got through saying, the problem that you do have here in the city. We're economically strapped in our communities. We don't have anything. Everything is always one-sided. It seems like, I heard a lot of issues tonight, but I haven't heard anyone mention the name of Little Wesley White that was known on that park. We are sick and tired of hearing these kind of reports where our children are killing one another because of the lack of economic equality. We've got many problems in this city. Everything here is one-sided. I tried to get on the agenda, to be able to come here to express some things because these three minutes is not enough for us to express how we really truthfully feel. I don't abandon that idea. I met twice. I'm not going to meet again. It's a shame that this body may have to defend itself for something that occurred prior to times that you wasn't in office at this present time. We're not going to stand out on the bar and allow this to keep continuing over and over and over and over and over. You're forming committees to come out and spend all this time trying to find something on the ethnic boards and this. The new one is thinking about this little boy that's laying down, that laid down out there on that park. The ones that took his life, they're victims. Their lives are going down the drain. We, I see the cockle stop. What did that mean? It's time out for all of this. And we not going to stand out on the bar and wait for these things to keep occurring. I want you to keep in your mind that this young man was a human being. He was somebody. And it's a shame that we failed him because we allowed this to take place economically. We got to change things economically here in the city. And it's not just something that needs to be occurring. It's a must. It must change. And we are going to put all our effort, we're going to use every ounce of our energy to see if we can bring about some changes here in the city. It's going to be unfortunate that some of you that wasn't on this board by this council are going to inherit something that was created, that's been going on for years and years and years and years. And it's got to be turned around. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson. Any other citizens to be heard?
Hi, John Porterman. I live at sixty-five sixty-five Porterman Road. I write, I get my mail at three-three-three-eight Country Club Road in Valdosta. And I must apologize, I'm going to compliment the city council and the staff, particularly about the local funding and requests. It's good to hear about all the details, about the emergency bypasses. And particularly the one on Knights Creek, the part I like the best is the part that hasn't been done yet where the rest of that's going to be replaced before it breaks, getting ahead of the problem. That's a good thing. And in the budget, I'm sure the budget isn't perfect, but I believe I saw in there a sixty-seven million dollar bond for water and sewer projects. Now, I'm looking forward to hear what those are going to be. But that also sounds like getting ahead of the problem and maybe fixing some of the old problems that continue to plague the city. And if I may suggest, y'all could even put out a press release about these things because I got to tell you, you've got a perception problem. There are a large number of people who think the city's doing nothing. And while I mentioned from time to time, by the way, I'm here as Samani River Keeper trying to keep waters clean, including the With the Gooch River and the creeks out of Valdosta. While I mentioned from time to time what you're doing, you've got people paid to do that. You've got a bully pulpit. You could let them know better than I can. And finally, I'd like to invite you all to a paddle on the With the Gooch River Saturday, nine AM, starting at Sullivan Box. That's the first access, public access to the With the Gooch River in Florida. We're going to paddle down past a bunch of springs, including First Magnitude Madison Blue Spring. And it should be a fine day on the water. You'll see what we're protecting downstream of the city of Valdosta. Oh, just one final item. If I could speak to the Mayor Pro Tim after the meeting about a trash question I have. Thank you.
So in attendance, we have Leadership Lounge twenty twenty-four, which is not the best class ever. But if you would stand, please, and be recognized, that'd be great.
If y'all say the right words, we'll get a picture as well. That being said, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the record meeting. All right, all favor? Say aye. Oppose?
I would like to call on Lauren from June sixth twenty twenty-four, being here in the mayor and council. I would like to call on Pastor James White, saving grace of New Street, to lead us to a call by the way.
Do you about what we just foremened? Holy righteous God, our Father, we thank you for this very day that we have. We've gathered in the spirit of unity and friendship. We have come together as a government ordained by you. We note that all things are from you. Give us the wisdom and the strength to do that which is good and right in your sight and in the sight of men. Bless our community, bless our citizens, bless our government and council and those that lead us. We pray for continued prosperity and hope. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minute's wrong, made it nine twenty-four record meeting, and made it a meeting for us to call me or come. We have two public hearings tonight. Public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Our second hearing, Chuck Dinkins, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. As we discussed at the work session, this is a public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The proposed budget totals one hundred and thirty-three million, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. This is a seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollar increase over the prior year in total. The individual items were covered extensively at the original hearing. And I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Council, do you have any questions? Would anyone like to speak in the city? Would anyone like to speak in favor of the request? If so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. If none... If none, would anyone like to speak against the request? If so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record as well. Hearing none and seeing none, we will turn this over to council for action. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the budget as presented.
Say it.
All in favor, raise a hand. Opposed, lock sign. One thing I did want to say is I think we were at four, was it a three, two, four, two? I did want to thank the city manager, Richard Hardy, Assistant City Manager Catherine Hammond, Chuck Dinkins, our Finance Director, Amy Hall, Budget Manager, Justice Stowe, Budget Analyst, Department of Heads, and others for all the hard work in bringing us a balanced budget for FY twenty-five. Thank y'all. Our second hearing, public hearing is a consideration of ordinance for conditional use permit for family personal care home in a single-family residential zoning district as requested by Roach Gibson. The property is located at twelve oh six West Magnolia Street. The planning commissioner reviewed this at their main twenty twenty-four record meeting and recommended approval subject to conditions. This passed with a five to zero vote. Matt Martin, Planning Director, will present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. As you say, it's a conditional use permit request for property at twelve oh six West Magnolia. As you see, it's on the north side of the road, about halfway in the block. A part of an R six zoning area that's a single-family neighborhood all the way around. That is the zoning pattern. Character area depicts the overall land use pattern, which is established residential for the area. Area imagery, you see the rooftops of the single-family homes. Sort of an urban forestry canopy that's also within the neighborhood. In your packet are several items, including an existing site sketch, also a floor plan of the specific facility. It is a three-bedroom house with about fifteen hundred square feet. And like we talked about at the work session, it's a little bit deceiving because from the road, it looks like a much smaller house. And the original part of the house was barely nine hundred square feet, but it has a six hundred square foot addition in the backyard, which you do not see from the road. But definitely a much bigger addition to the house. Some other imagery, this is the view of the side yard looking into the back. Surrounded property, single-family homes looking to the east, down Magnolia Street to the east, across the road to the south, and then westward along West Magnolia. Same pattern that you see in all directions. And then the existing home immediately to the west. Again, the property itself, single-family residence. The driveway holds about two cars, not a very large front yard. It's an existing personal care home. As you know, personal care homes that are less than four people are used by right in single-family zoning. The applicant availed themselves of that about a year ago and got licensed as a personal care home with three. They are now proposing to expand to five, which triggers the conditional use public hearing process. And that is why they are good for you. Planning commissioner reviewed this at their meeting. They're recommending approval of it, subject to four conditions that are here in your packet. The first one is approval shall be granted for a personal care home with up to four residents. It continues to meet all state and local licensing requirements. Number two, all parking for the facility shall be on fully paved surfaces as approved by the city engineer. Number three, install a fire sprinkler system and alarm monitoring system as approved by both the fire marshal and the building official. Since the work session and this morning, there's been some discussion amongst the building official and fire department staff about that. And that may no longer be a requirement per their codes. And I will let them address specific questions and details on that. But that comes from the International Fire Code and the Life Safety Code that would be applicable regardless of city council or state licensing approvals. And then lastly, number four, conditional use approval shall expire after two years from the date of approval if no amended business license to the increased size of the facility has been approved by that date. Glad to try and answer any questions you may have. Building official is here as well as the fire chief, and they're ready to answer those questions if necessary.
Council, do you have any questions for...
I have one. It's not, I just asked if the Atlanta, who is home, got her dad's insurance on the first, correct? If Atlanta is not making the move so tight, why are we making the rent change so tight?
Right, they still have to go through the state licensing re-review for an increased size so that they get with the local fire marshal to do a site inspection. And the state rules, at least when I read them online, they have to comply with all building and fire codes that are applicable to the site. That's a requirement.
So they have to agree with Valdosta's city code, not the state's?
They have to comply with our land use code, which is zoning, which is a conditional use approval. But they have to comply with international fire codes and life safety codes, regardless of what we do. So even if we approve them zoning-wise for twelve people, these other codes might bring that down to a smaller number or vice versa. But both have to apply. The state license comes later. They want the local license approval first to get their state license. And then it's whatever is the more restrictive of the two. But the official inspection has yet to be done for the state licensing part. And that gets into a lot more details about the facility, the type of folks who live there. One of the things that's in your packet too, this is for disabled adults. And I think I remember from years ago, that's looked at a little differently from licensing. In other words, safety of being able to exit the building is even more important.
Yeah, I'd be glad to entertain any questions. International building codes use for personal care. We also had a question come up earlier about another facility, which was come before you guys in 2019 for rezoning and for temporary occupancy use. And so I'm not sure where the misunderstanding came from on this particular case, but it's pre-existing. They're not changing the classification. They're only asking to add residents. So that is not going to require an automatic sprinkler system for this facility because it was already classified. So, I mean, I just want to make sure we're all clear on that, and then I'll continue. So again, now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, Chief. So right now, the zoning board recommends four, but if Ms. Rose Jankins, if she was to request that fifth person, then she would come to us again and ask for that conditional use permit, or is that, you know?
Right. And so, and how that's going to affect us as authority having jurisdiction under life safety code 101 is going to be by square footage. And it's eight, it's pretty much 80 square feet per person, but understand that if you have a total of 324 square foot, it's going to be minus the surface area that's taken up by furniture. And so, you know, it's balancing these things, right? We go in and we, can we realistically put two persons, there's a large bedroom in this particular house, realistically, we can house two people in there, right? But you put two queen-sized beds in there, now we can't realistically house two people. So it's, it's balancing that as we deal with our citizens and our customers and making sure that we find the right, that the right balance that we are protecting them. So they go in and put a lot of furniture in, and it reduces how many residents. Now, I also tell you this, because there's times that we'll, we'll look at the square footage, and then we go look at a building, and they go, well, we have a room that doesn't have a window, it doesn't have means of egress. Well, we may have to eliminate that particular room as being eligible for a bedroom because of the facility. And so, we're some of the confusion came in. International building code is where it said five or fewer, if they have an automatic sprinkler system, then they will be graded under the international residential code, meaning that they're not going to have to have those commercial components. You have to have councilmen in your restaurant, right? So they can have smoke alarms like we need in our residence versus that commercial component. That's where that come into place, five or fewer with an automatic sprinkler system. So with the, with the other case, councilman that, that came up today was a, was a new facility, and they come before council in 2019, and they ask for rezoning to a multifamily and for a temporary occupancy use. And when you do that, then it takes on that, that updated code. Yes, sir.
You refer to Ms. Kirk.
Correct, yes, sir.
So Chief, if she, what if you said king-size bed, so what if she got queen-size bed, would that make a difference to them?
Proportionally, yes. So if they got twins, I think, did you say twins? I like that. So if they got twin beds for the resident, right, then we're taking up less space. Two twin beds, a nice stand. So it's occupiable space, by square foot is 80 per, per resident. So we go in there and we put a bunch of furniture, then that reduces the amount of residents that we can have. That's why, if you guys run across some of our, our customers and they go, well, they won't give me an exact number, sometimes that's why it is. So please reach out to, to Fire Prevention. If you don't get the, the answers you have there, I'm always available. But sometimes, so I'm not getting the answers, the reason is that we have to do some calculations. That calculation changes as furniture. So let's just say the twin beds, we go in there and we do measurements, they use twin beds, and we can, we can safely house four residents, right? And they're not, they're not suitable for independent living, so we have four residents. We go back for an annual inspection, and they've converted those twin beds to queen. That's going to reduce the amount of residents we can have, right? So there's some other components that go in there, and that's balancing international build code, international fire code, life safety code 101. That's why Rick Bradford, Chief Clinkes, our inspectors, all of those have to get together and meet in making sure that we find that right balance to protect our customers because if one something happens, we're the ones that have to answer for that.
So is there any time we could let her know that she might have twin beds to occupy two weeks?
So, right. And so we'll follow up, and I'll get with Matt Martin and Mr. Bradford and Chief Clinkes to make sure that she understands that your selection of furniture is going to directly affect. Now, keep in mind, if we do have a room that does not have a window, it does not have what's going to be sufficient for a emergency egress, that's going to eliminate that room as one that we can use the square footage to add to their occupancy.
Y'all want to buy that, is two wood, like queens?
Okay.
Plenty of room.
Plenty, right. So I'll tell you what. I can give you that big room, 374 square feet minus the furniture, 300 square, 374 square feet, we can easily put two residents in that room. Depending on how much furniture they put in there, it's going to reduce it. I would hate to see them reduce that down to one occupancy because they put so much furniture in there. So if they, if we had to make some changes, right, so I have people that do that, I'm just here to explain it. 108.7 square foot on another bedroom, we're going to be able to put one resident in there. The other bedroom, 88.2 square foot, limited furniture, one resident. So it's, it's a fair, it's a small room. So just some of the things that are specific to that building that, that's some questions tonight.
Good, Chief. One more question. Are there alternative fire suppression systems available?
So the, that, and that's one of the things that was in the email chain as I was researching last night. I know we were asked specifically at one time, what's, what's a rule of thumb, or what's a ballpark figure on a residential sprinkler system? And that's really, we really don't get in the weeds on that because the sprinkler system comes in and it depends on the design. Once you cross into that automatic sprinkler system requirement, then there's not really any alternatives. There are alternatives in other fire suppression systems. For example, not for you, sir, but a commercial, our residential kitchen, let's just say we're crossing that line, and I hate to even say specifically, but let's just say we have, we're, we're in a, we have some leeway because the way we run our fire prevention inspection office is everyone is our customer. So you'll never hear of anyone, we go in and do an inspection, and we say, you have 30 days and we're closing you down. We go in and depending on the violations, if it's going to take them more than 30 days to realistically comply, then we're going to come back and check, and we're going to work with them. And so to get to your question, we may be able to in some instances, not this one, but they don't need a sprinkler system anyway, where they may have a, it's a can that automatically pops off when it reaches a certain temperature and it drops sodium bicarbonate on an oven. Now, in Councilman Harden's case, his business obviously wouldn't be effective, right, because of the, the facility that he has has to have a automatic suppressive system. So in some smaller instances, not a commercial restaurant or, or a facility that serves food all the time, that wouldn't be the case, but one that they're requiring more suppression components, but maybe we can keep from going to that full-on air pressurized suppression system, then, then there are some alternatives. We always look for the most economic way and still keep the customer safe. And so that's our goal. Our motto in fire prevention is no is not the answer. So even though that might be the end, that we have to say that's not going to work, I challenge our folks to never tell our customers no, in that we always try to tell them alternatives, if there is one, or we try to work with them on some kind of solution. Now, I understand some folks don't want to spend the money to do what they need to do. And so at that time, it's our job, unfortunately, to, to monitor those guidelines and regulate to keep our folks safe, but we always try to look for a more economical solution and also meet those safety criteria.
Just to be clear, as you said, that she does not need?
She does not need an automatic sprinkler system. She does not need one at all. It's pre-existing. So I just want to make sure, and please forgive me if, if I'm repeating myself, I just want to make sure we know why. She was already classified as a, the, thank you. Where's your heart? Personal care home. So without her reclassifying or doing any renovations, then she stays up under the same classification, and she's fine. Now, if she was to open a new one or renovate, she's going to have to put a sprinkler system.
Or renovate.
Right. So we have to be very careful when we talk to folks that I'm going to renovate and do these things, but they're under old code because that will make them fall up under the latest code.
So if someone was to, if she decided to add on to her residence?
Yes, ma'am.
And she went as a little residence, little tiny, then she would have to go back and come back through all the codes that you were talking about with us, that correct?
Yes, ma'am. So she would fall up under IVC 2022 if she added on. She says, I want 10 residents. We know the square footage will not occupy 10 residents, so she says, I'm going to make the addition to, to, to be able to accommodate that, then she would fall up under 2022, and then she would be required of automatic sprinkler system.
Right, Chief.
I just wanted to ask, and this is what you were saying and so forth and everything like that, so we don't, we didn't have a standard, uh, speaking of standards, but we, we, we are according to what, you know?
So that's a great question. So you're right, the city of Adosta does not have a standard because we go under the international building code, and you guys don't want that. You guys don't want a Adosta building code or Adosta fire code because you want to, you want to adopt international building code, international fire code, and life safety code because that's been, that's been vetted on an international level. So there's, now, there are a lot of things that fall up under authority having jurisdiction. I'm the authority having jurisdiction. So if we have a specific case that comes up, it's authority having jurisdiction, then I fall back on best practices and precedents. So what have we done in the past? So yeah, to answer your question short, yeah, we do have a standard, it's the same one as IVC, IFC, and life safety code 101.
I was wondering.
Yes, ma'am. No, that's a great question because you're going to hear me talk a lot about ISO, and we're getting ready to do this thing again, right? It's very important that we maintain a standard. Part of that is a city ordinance that we have that you guys have adopted that says that we will abide by the latest code, IVC, IFC, and life safety code.
And I told you standard code, ma'am.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
You said it was standard code?
International building code, international fire code, and life safety code, which is the National Fire Protection Association.
Thank you, Chief. I'm putting a break on this.
Yeah, let me, the chief out a little bit. The building code does have it in there automatically, which we adopt from the DCA. The current codes are adopted by local jurisdictions, so the IVC and the, and the IRC, basically chapter three. How we look at it is a classification of the use of the building. So once we find out the use of the building is a daycare, and that classification and use, then it refers us to other chap, like chapter nine, which is all fire sprinklers. So if I say it's an I four, I go in there, I look at I four, it'll say, the building must be automatically be sprinkled, it shall be sprinkled no matter what. Even if I, like this here, we classify these as I four or R three. When you go back into, in chapter nine, it will say it shall be, and it says shall be sprinkled. But because she didn't change the use of the classification, we really can't push that issue, and we won't push that issue. And then when it comes down to the different sprinkler systems, we have R, 13R, 13, and 13D. So what we try to do, when I get in the situations, I'll go out there and Clinkes will go out there, but I go out there, because it's buildings, that's the building's job to require the sprinkler system under the IVC. So what I do is go in and look and see the means of egress to what really needs to be sprinkled under 13D. So if I go 13, then the whole building, closets, and everything attic would have to be sprinkled. So I go out there and I look at it and go by 13D to make sure it's only the means of egress to help with the cost of the sprinkler system for these folks. And that's what I've been doing lately with them, to help them out. So they ain't sprinkling the living room or an office that doesn't need to be, be sprinkled because that, it gives me the call to do that. So that's what I do with, with, with a sprinkler system, but it isn't a code.
And just to clarify, egress means windows or doors?
Mean, now, there's a difference between the means of egress and the emergency escape window, okay? The emergency escape window, rescue window, is really for fire to get in there with all their apparatus, the air tanks, the mask, for them to get in the window. It ain't so much for means of egress. The means of egress would be the door. That's their main way out. It isn't the window. The window's really designed, it's got to be a certain size, a 5-0 or 5-7, if it depended on what floor it's on, for fire to get in there to rescue the individual out. Like in this case here, why we request four, that office does not have a window. So if something catches on fire in front of that door, that means of egress to get out of that room, then that individual's stuck in that room with no way for fire to get in there to rescue them. And that's why we push for four. And it's designed for a three-bedroom home. The other rooms, other bedrooms have windows, and it specifically requires bedrooms to have windows for emergency escape and rescue. And that's for fire to get in, is what it's really designed for.
Yep. Any other question? All right, thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate that. This is a public hearing, so those speaking in favor of the request and those speaking against the request will be given a total of 15 minutes to be heard. We ask that you allot time for everyone on each side and wish to speak, or each side may appoint one spokesperson for the group to be heard. With that being said, would anyone like to speak in favor of the request? Please come forward, state your name, address for the record.
CNN, would anyone like to speak against your request? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. CNN as well. I'd like to turn this over to the council for action.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for stipulation judgment.
Sir. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, lock sign. All right, six to zero vote, motion carries. All right, ordinance and resolutions. Consideration of resolution authorizing the execution of contract with George Department Transportation for Patterson Street Resurfacing and Utility Justice Project. Ben O'Dowd, city engineer, will present.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
This first agenda item is, as discussed on Tuesday, the contract item agreement for the raising and lowering of manhole beds and valve boxes, which is work that's scheduled to occur in conjunction with Patterson resurfacing for G-Dot. I can answer any questions if I have.
Do we have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, the motion you require is presented.
Sir.
All in favor, raise your hand. Lock sign, again. Four, two, motion carries. We have bids and contracts and agreements and expenditures. Consideration of bids for resurfacing of streets in the city of Adosta, due to splosh paid funding and the G-Dot local maintenance and appropriate grant. Ben O'Dowd, city engineer, will present.
Yes, sir. Again, this is the agenda item for the approval of the contract award to Williamson Sun Construction for street maintenance in 2024, or street maintenance 2024. We had a really tight bid spread. As we discussed on Tuesday, Williams was 2.786 million, 160 thou, or 160 dollars, and Scruggs was 2 million, 769,010 dollars and 28 cents, which is less than a 1% bid spread. This is indicative to a very competitive market right now. We've got a lot of resurfacing going on. We just talked about, the last agenda item was the CIA for Patterson, so there's a lot of asphalt going down right now. So we think we're in a really competitive market, and it doesn't show any signs of stopping or slowing down. We're going to continue to maintain streets of the city. The county's doing a lot of work, there's a lot of work going on regionally. Tia's going on, so we've just got a ton of work, which is a good thing, but in order to get these 3.7 miles of streets resurfaced, it's going to cost us a little bit more than anticipated, so. Staff recommends approval. I can answer any questions.
You said come sign, ma'am. You said Scruggs, if you, you say bridge, you mean Scruggs?
Yes, ma'am. The, the low bidder was Scruggs, I apologize. Yes ma'am, the, the low bidder was Scruggs. I apologize.
Uh, were you removed yet after serving the resurfacing last night?
Oh goodness, it's still going on. They're just wrapping it up right now. I wanna say it was Scruggs, I believe. Don't quote me on that though. I can look back at my records and, and send you an email though.
Do we have any additional questions? Alright, I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, um, wanted low bid, Scruggs.
Second.
I agree, discussions of the motion. If none, uh, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, not signed. Alright, five to zero vote, motion carries. Alright, um, B, consideration of request to mandate contract the River North Transit R F C and stand deal on the mandatory patient services for Adosta. Mary Autumn, by the Washington State Department of Health, will present.
Good evening, Mayor Proton, council. On Friday, March the eighth, the city of Adosta received a email from Ms., excuse, Carrie Tulley, this Assistant Program Delivery Manager for the state of Georgia. In that email, she stated that the FTA procedure system was reviewed and they determined that the RFQ, which is a request for qualification, was not allowable for engineering or architectural project. Given that new information, we had to change from RFQ to a RFP, Request For Proposal. That process, we had to start over from scratch. They told we would not be able to proceed with the current bid process. So we had to start everything over from the beginning. With that new information, our current contract ends Sunday, June the thirty, twenty twenty-four. And with those new guidelines in place, the RFQ could not be completed. So we requested an extension from bill, our current transit provider, for additional one hundred and eighty days. We wanna go in increments of ninety days. So if we get everything done, we would not need the additional ninety days. Staff, the current contract provider bill, they have agreed to extend the contract at the same proposal. The fees are in, the fees will not increase. So everything that we're currently paying now, we're gonna carry over to the extension that we're requesting. The staff member requests approval of this extension. I'll take any questions.
Do we have some more questions?
Yes ma'am.
Could you repeat the name of the person you said?
Ms. Carrie Tulley.
Don't you say the castle.
No ma'am.
I should gather then. So you would just say, and stuff, everything, that we've been asking, you got all that, you don't give the same company with the same fee?
Yes ma'am, everything will stay the same. Bill will extend the contract until we finish our RFP. Once that is concluded, if bill is selected as our provider, we will continue with bill.
So will be extended a hundred and ninety days or?
We have asked for a maximum of one hundred and eighty days if needed, but we're gonna ask for ninety days to begin with. Because like I said, once the RFP is complete, we may not need the additional one hundred and eighty days. Any other question?
Uh, I entertain a motion.
Sir, Mr. Mayor Proton, I'd like to make a request to approve this presentation presented by Mr. Larry Alvin.
Sir. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, not signed. Six to zero vote, motion carries. Alright, local funding and requests. Consideration of request to authorize payment for emergency bypass and sewer repairs on Pebblewood Drive. Jason Barnes, Assistant Materials Director, will present.
Good evening, Mayor Proton and council. So on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, James Warren Associates was contacted to mobilize, to establish, to maintain a bypass for eighteen inch sewer, sewer main that had possibly collapsed or blocked. At the time, we didn't know. So once the bypass was established, we took our camera truck and we was able to video, um, actually saw the blockage. So we had, uh, James Warren and the city got agreed to get together and we cleared the vegetation within the easement, removed the blockage. And then once this was handled, we removed possibly two yards of granite rock and there was asphalt and cable wire and stringy cloth materials, everything in there. So the pipe was repaired and replaced back in normal operation. Um, and the emergency bypass was concluded back on January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, as you can see, the picture is just also part of that. We were, uh, the manhole was basically in the bottom of, as you can see. And we actually took that manhole and raised up about five foot and got it out of that waterway where it rains. It's not infiltration, it's not getting into our sewer lines. So the staff recommends that council approve the authorization of payments to James Warren Associates in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and thirty-five cent. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I don't have a question, but we can get the citizens to know that we're, this is work, this has already been done and we're paying this bill.
This work has been done. It was emergency repair. It's finished and we know we're paid.
Any additional questions? I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sir.
Alright, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, not signed. Alright, uh, motion carries to six to zero. Alright, Jason, please.
Thank you.
Consideration of request to authorize payment for phase three final billing for emergency sewer repairs at Knights Creek, near the intersection of US Highway eighty-four and Blanchard Street. Jason Barnes, Assistant Materials Director, will present.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. This is on February sixteenth, as we all know, this was started back in, of last year. Um, just to recall a little bit, on October the fifth of last year, I brought to you the phase one, which was the bypass, the easement, the clearing, to get the road access. And then that was the phase one part. Then I came back on March seventh of this year. That was the phase two, which is the southern portion of that was approved. And now this is the phase three, the final billing for this emergency sewer repair. Um, due to the, on February sixteenth, we received a call, um, the loss of flow. The collapsed twenty-one inch diameter sanitary sewer frontline was located near the intersection of Highway eighty-four and Blanchard. Uh, we selected RPI to perform any emergency repair work necessary to repair the deteriorated lines. The existing twenty-one inch ductile iron pipe was deteriorated due to the sewer gases that corroded the top portion of the pipe. Uh, this was, part of this was maintain, remove the bypass that was already in place to provide and install the, the bore. This was the bore under railroad, under CSX. Um, provide and install, maintain de-watering, provide and install the three six inch diameter manholes. And then we grouted. Um, so the staff recommends, before I get to there, if you look at your screen, um, part of that, on that drawing, if you look down to the south, a little bit to the bottom of that, that's a manhole one ninety-nine. Um, that was replaced to two hundred. And then when you go into it from two hundred on up into the green, uh, that part was not yet replaced because it wasn't deteriorating as bad as the rest of it. So when we go out for bid, we're making, back after July first, well, that can be burst. So we don't have to basically, uh, trench that part there. And then if you go from there, it goes, we removed two oh three, went straight to two oh four to two oh five at the very top. Um, and that's where this emergency repair has stopped to that point. Beyond that, two oh five going north, um, all the way to the lift station, um, Lakeland Lift Station, that will be part of the actual bid that goes out after July. So this is the final part of phase three final payment for the emergency repair for this. And the staff recommends to authorize the phase three final payment RPI in the amount of two million, eight hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the emergency sewer repairs at Knights Creek. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Kind of occurred with something different, sir. I just heard you say that the green part wasn't the emergency part. You were not doing anything with that.
Right now, it wasn't, the, the part in the green from, basically, the first one all the way at the bottom, yes, that one, it started at one ninety-nine. From two hundred to basically the two oh one to the two oh two, that yet has not been replaced. That's gonna be part of the bid when it goes out after July. When we looked at that, it wasn't as worse shape as the rest of it was. So we just said, hey, we'll burst that. We ain't gotta do what we're doing now, time to replace it. So that'll be later.
We've not asked, because I knew what we were talking about. They had to pay for the replacement. Instead, it's so close to getting complete, being here, just put it in there, emergency. We had, I thought it was waiting, but I thought we were, it was just a portion, it wasn't left, it wasn't the emergency thing. And we just, since it was so close and there was gonna be, it's gonna be repaired. Surely we could do this.
Yeah, um, yes ma'am, on that section from two hundred to two oh two was basically is not as bad shape. So it's like, why put it on emergency repair when we can go out for bid? Because that would have been another stretch from there on, when we can just burst it and we ain't gotta go and dig and trench again. So, um, that, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a different way of doing that without having to put it in mercy. So that, that will be, uh, cheaper. That will be cheaper, a lot cheaper.
Alright, any other questions? I entertain a motion. Alright, is there any discussion on the motion? If none, uh, raise your hand, raise. Opposed, not signed. So five to zero votes, um, motion carries. I would like to say, um, add to y'all that Councilman Carroll had to step away. Um, he's been done with sickness and he felt like he could come tonight. And after being up here, he's got, feeling a little bit worse. So now he's decided, um, go home. So in case y'all are wondering where he's at, so, um, please excuse himself. Alright. Boards and commissions, authorities and body of committees, uh, consideration of the selection of a third member to serve on the ethics complaint board. Catherine Hammond, Assistant City Manager, will present. However, um, I do need to read for the record a conflict of interest letter from Councilwoman Miller Cody regarding this agenda item. As acquired by both CGA thirty-six dash sixty-seven dash A at S A and the city of Adosta Code of Ethics, I hereby acknowledge that I have potential, potential conflict of interest pertaining to agenda item seven A for the regular council meeting of June the sixth, twenty twenty-four. As a result, I will not participate in any discussion nor vote nor make any attempt to influence the decision of council. The conflict of interest that I have pertains to consideration of the selection of the third member to serve on the ethics complaint board as I am the party of that ethics complaint was filed against.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. On May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, an official ethics complaint was issued against Councilwoman Vivian Miller Cody by Nita Riley, the neighborhood development and community protection manager. The ethics complaint was then officially delivered to the city clerk, um, by the city clerk to Councilwoman Miller Cody and to each councilman on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. At a special call meeting on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, Councilwoman Eric Howard brought forth the name of J D Rice for consideration to serve on the ethics complaint board. Council, and council approved the selection of Mr. Rice to serve on the complaint board. With, uh, Councilwoman Miller Cody abstaining. Mayor Matheson then announced that his selection to serve on the ethics complaint board would be, uh, Dr. Albert Payton. Mr. Rice and Dr. Payton have since discussed the third qualifying member of the ethics board who must be in good standing with the Georgia Bar Association. The name for council's consideration this evening is attorney Roy W. Copeland from Copeland, Poplin, Brooklyn, Walker.
Are there any, any questions, council? Alright, I entertain a motion.
Yeah, Proton, I'd like to make a motion to approve the change of our call.
Sir.
Are there any discussion on the motion? Alright, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, not signed. Alright, four to zero, motion carries. Motion carries. All right. We'll turn it over to the City Manager's report. Catherine Adams, Assistant City Manager will present.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. This Friday, June seventh, we have our first Friday After Five in downtown Hollister from five to eight. On June eighth, from eight AM till eleven, we have the Memorial Headstone Cleaning at Sunset Hill Cemetery. June eighth as well, from nine to eleven, Community Road Cleanup to Cypress Street. Cleanup areas will be from Hollywood Street to Robinson Street. Anne Mildred and the meetup is at twenty-ten Cypress Street. June tenth through the fourteenth, from eight AM to twelve, the VPD will be hosting their Stand Against Youth Violence Education Camp in our annex multipurpose room. June twelfth at five thirty, we have the Young Game Changers Mayor's Paddle. They're meeting at Erdas Pizza Kitchen and then they're gonna stake off at Landale Place. And then June fourteenth, we have the Juneteenth Family Reunion Day at McMullen South Side Library at six PM. June fifteenth, we have Juneteenth festivities from eleven to four at Unity Park and a joint proclamation at noon. And city offices will be closed on Juneteenth.
All right. Counselor comments? Chief, what is the open testing for places far?
Is it this Saturday?
Yeah. It is gonna be this Saturday. It should be posted on the website.
All right.
And that's in the multipurpose room? Sure. Juneteenth at Unity Park. Yeah. We have a joint proclamation and then at noon, then at House of the Party.
Any other counsel comments?
Yes.
Counselor.
Councilman Howard, you mentioned the open testing. I was listening to what Mr. Rock said about the young gentleman, Western white. That is so unfortunate in our community. It's, you know, this has been, this is plenty of the United States period, you know, with these, with youth violence. And with more specifically not Augusta, we are definitely, it's getting worse, you know. Until we definitely need folks to step up. It's not gonna happen from this council. Right here, we just said, right here, we gotta have community involved in folks. I encourage you to actually send folks as well to that open testing for the police department. We need more folks in our areas, you know. We are definitely underserved, very underserved. Several reasons for that. But we need more people in those areas, definitely, definitely. And we just need more resources as well. And that's something that we all have to help with, you know what I mean? A lot of folks talk, we do a lot of talking to actually move and make some things happen. When I ran for office, one thing I always said I wanted to do was make sure that, that we govern with common sense. And some things in that LDR that Stacy was just mentioning, it does not make sense. We wanna be business friendly and we encourage business, yet we prohibit our businesses, businesses from striving. And we put more onto our businesses than we should. I mean, we, we need guidance, we definitely need guidance. Don't knock on Matt and crew, they do a great job. We definitely need guidance. But there's some things that definitely need to be looked at. I'm not saying the whole LDR is, garbage juice is not, it's good stuff. But some of them needs to just be common sense stuff. Also, we definitely need to look into some of our practices, period. And I think we have, we have an amazing staff, y'all. We have some amazing people that we have hired here and they are very capable of getting some of the things done. A lot of times, I think they get ready to for, for the small things. As Mr. Porter has said, we do have some things that are going very well, very good, very, very good things happening. Those are the things. So I want to commit our share. Don't know that you guys are doing some rock star things. We gotta continue to do this together. And I very much hope so. And this council, keep on working. Let's keep it up.
Counselor Parker. Counselor Howard?
I just wanted to go back to what we direct our anger at. You know, we get a lot of people who anger at the police department. Police department, they go out and they arrest the people who commit crimes. That's what they're supposed to, the police department, not letting you out. You gotta go out here and talk to your judges. Go out here and talk to the district attorney. The police job is to arrest the crime. You commit a crime, the police arrest you. If they get it back out, don't get paid, the police didn't do it. So I'm quite sure the sheriff doesn't wanna let anyone out. So we gotta know what we have to go speak. You wanna get a group of people together, go find out why they let people who get out, who just shot up a house. Go talk to the district attorney, go talk to the, to the judge. That's who will let them out. Don't direct that anger at our police department because they're doing it supposed to be good. I don't think anyone grew up poor than I did. I didn't shoot a guy. I didn't rob, I didn't rob schools. So we got, you're not gonna give anybody excuses for doing this type of stuff. No, that's not an excuse to rob and shoot somebody just because you're poor. That's, that's no excuse. When I grew up, we didn't have all the entertainment that we had. So we're not gonna put it on board. We're gonna have to put it back where it belongs. Just don't take the community, we have to have our parents do what they need to do to help with these shit. These are not all babies. And these are, some of these are doves. So we can't ask parents to do anything for those. So when, when you have a police officer, you have our, have these events, we need someone to come out, need people to come out to them and, and participate so we can help kick this crime ass. Money is always gonna make it, so we can't use it all. We can't always blame no money. But a lot of this stuff, we can do ourselves.
Counselor Howard?
Let us.
Counselor Mike, pass.
I could expand a little bit on that. Police work, its success is largely based on people helping. About every two days, we get a summary of police report. And we'll see where suspect shot, will not cooperate. Next case, will not cooperate. Will not cooperate. But then on the, on the flip side, we're saying, saying we need to do something about the crime. Well, the police have to have our cooperation. There are even parents, this was about the week though, that were hiding murder suspects. There are many kids, there was three. And so these suspects were on the loose because of the community hiring. So there's two, two sides to the call. And with the LDR, I agree. We need to stop kicking this can down the road. When, when are we gonna come up with a date? Time? We're just gonna sit down and review quick, quick guidance of the people that are out there. The LDR doesn't particularly affect you.
I volunteer to help.
I hear from the community how natively they're affected. And you know, signs and crack murdles that can't be cut, it's, it is ridiculous.
Yes, sir.
Two hundred fifty dollar fine for cutting a fifty dollar street. Don't make no sense. So when are we gonna do something? Is my, is my question. To council, I mean, I'm ready. What you, what you say?
I think Captain, Captain Ripken, I'm excited to go get here.
Counselor want to tell?
Well, I wanna echo that as well because we have requested to get together, go with somebody, our council, our area, and we're going to do it. We do, like I said, commit to second time. And that is, community here, a lot of our citizens, about, I can tell you, want forgiveness. They decide to go and they have, cause we fight, we listen to the same. We're, we're good, we're good. Tell the dog, they try and say it just not work. So we are still trying and we are gonna make some changes. I can't, we do like a day or anything on, but we hear our citizens and we are gonna work with them, we are trying. And also I'm gonna say to a lot of citizens, I always say, this is your council, you do need to come, talk to them, let us know. But sometimes we keep coming and so the same thing. Why don't you like when we went to the street? You know, we don't know if we have to come up here and, and moustache it like that. If we want something to done, done right, right down, right down the perspective of the city as a whole, my problem. Maybe we can find some solutions, get some things taken together. And a lot of times when we can see it, we can probably put it down like a data and have it and check and adjust it now. We, I do know, we are all working towards helping our citizens enjoy the living in Mount Oz. We want you to be here. We want you to be, to be economically happy. We are trying to make Mount Oz better, because all to work together. You gotta be here, the council gotta be here, and the citizens gotta be here. We are working, we are staying up to work. We want to be up to work, we want to be here, we keep trying.
Thank you, sir.
Right, 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 what you're talking about, bring it to us.
Thank you. Any other counsel comments?
Uh, I don't know. I'd like to thank everyone who came up to explain this, the system and the codes and stuff like that. I'm glad y'all know what's going on because a lot of those, all those different codes, the CIA and all this other stuff, it's just, you know. We just wanna make sure that the citizens are treated fair and safe and is right. Looks like that's what we're doing.
That's very good. And the citizens, you have a thank you.
I would like to add as well, the ones that I asked if you would stay over, if you would truly stay over and answer your questions, that'd be great so we can at least try to better understand what your situation is so we can have a better answer for you if we don't have it tonight. Also, in attendance, we have Leadership Lounge twenty twenty-four, which is not the best class ever. But if you would stand, please, and be recognized, that'd be great. And if y'all stay over afterwards, we'll get a picture as well. That being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn the Red Council meeting.
All in favor, say aye. Vote.